Date and time scheduled for the city council meeting. So, Mr. Lang, sir, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone, welcome again. Our friend there, she's not as upset she was a minute ago.
I feel the same way coming to city council.
If she wants to take over the gavel, I'm about to have to cry. So, all right, Mr. Ricketts, would you please take the roll?
Sikora.
Here.
Terrencey.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Calendino.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
All here, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. So, council provided you and your packets with the minutes from July 2nd, August 13th, and August 26th. It would require a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve that three sets of minutes as presented.
Yeah, discussion. I'll wait for discussion.
Do we have a second before discussion?
I wasn't here, so I can't support.
It's been moved by Mr. Sikora, supported by Mr. Calendino. Discussion on the minutes.
There was one part of the minutes, I gotta find it. When we talked about the filter, there were actually two, yeah, here it is. The August 13th, 2019, page 3 of 5. It says, "Motion by Deion, seconded by O'Donnell, to table the request." And then it explains, and then right under that it says, "Motion by Deion, seconded by Calendino, to approve the request." But I don't think that was ever an actual, I don't remember, I know I didn't vote to approve it.
Is the filter for what location?
7566 Greeley.
Oh, yeah, I recall that.
So, we have two conflicting motions on the same item.
We did. We had those two motions. I listened to the tape. You made a motion to table, and then after a lot of discussion, you made a motion to approve the request contingent on building approval fee and engineering approval.
No.
That does sound familiar, actually.
I can re-listen to the tape.
We didn't vote with the contingency at all, because I remember I was, I think we were very against that.
I think we did vote with the contingency that it was subject to the approval of all those bodies. But we can certainly review the minutes.
I wasn't here, so I don't know. I can review the tape again. You have to review the tape.
Okay. Well, subject to the review of the tape, we have, it's been moved, it's been, I'll amend the motion. I'd like to, I'm sorry, Mr. Sikora, would you like to amend the motion?
I'll amend the motion to, how do we say it? Review the tape and clarify that issue of the filter on the property on Greeley. I do remember all the discussion back and forth, because the one gentleman whose property it was not had all the regulations and heights and this and that, and that was the question. If we backfilled it, that was the height versus outside, and I really don't, I remember all that, and I don't remember how we voted.
My recollection was that we tabled it.
We tabled.
Till he would come back with more data, and he was gonna, I think, talk to Jerry as well.
But it was also, it was also the case that he, it wasn't required. All he had to do was require that he follow the law and building codes in order to do it. He wasn't required to bring more data until after the project was done. As long as he's following the code, he was fine. The concern was John, I can't remember John's last name, how to pronounce it.
Maronic.
Yeah, he was very concerned, but his concerns weren't, weren't conflicted with the law. Well, we certainly have, we'll review the notes, the minutes. So, it's been, we have a new motion.
Support.
It's been supported by Mr. Calendino. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Every so often, we get the privilege of having new people in our fire department and/or police department, and what I'd like to do at this time is I'd like to introduce a couple of our new firefighters. And today, we have with us Michael Carney. Michael, where you at? There you go. And Kevin Curry. Did I say it right?
Corey.
Corey? Okay. Well, do you, no, Siri. Calm down. Do you have your family here with you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. His family's right here? Okay, good. So, Michael, come on up real quick. We'll do you first. Let's go stand right over here by the flag. Yes, right over here by the flag. Where'd you come from before you came to Utica?
Grew up in Rochester Hills and living in Shelbyville.
Fire anywhere else?
Rochester.
And are you a firefighter, EMT, medic?
Medic, firefighter.
Good, good. So, if you see this guy, hopefully you're waiting for him while he's driving by, but if he's on the way to the house, hopefully he'd just come to visit, but otherwise, he's a firefighter, paramedic. We like when they show up, and God bless them for what they do. So, raise your right hand. Bless your left hand, on the Bible. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the Charter for the City of Utica.
And the Charter for the City of Utica.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Of the City of Utica Fire Department.
Of the City of Utica Fire Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of firefighter and paramedic.
The duties of firefighter and paramedic.
For the City of Utica Fire Department.
For City of Utica Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Mr. Corey. Did I say it, Corey or Curry?
Corey.
Corey. So, Kevin, have you fought fire elsewhere?
No.
And how old are you?
Twenty-two.
Oh, good. Does your mom hear us?
Yes.
Do we have his permission slip yet to be a firefighter? And he doesn't have his driver's license? Are you with us this last weekend?
Yes.
So, I'll tell you a story real quick. This last weekend, we were very fortunate here in Utica. We have, well, we got great firefighters and great police officers. They showed up and made a huge difference this weekend. There's a little boy that's suffering from leukemia here in Utica. His name's Ethan Koch. He's 11. He's been ill since, pretty much since the day he's born. His mom, he lived in the city here, just down the way, and I asked our firefighters and police officers if they'd help out. So, they end up taking the fire engine, the ambulance, the police cars. They went over to his house. They picked him up. They gave him the big ride, put him in the fire engine, all the lights and the horns and everything, and drove him all the way to the ball field, and they were able to give him the, have thrown out the first pitch over at Jimmy John's Field for the championship game. So, Mr. Corey didn't work for us. Right? He wasn't sworn in, but he volunteered already. This is the kind of people that we have here in Utica. So, we're really proud to have guys like Mr. Corey and the rest of our firefighters here doing a great job. They just show up. Every time we ask them to do something, they jump. I call chief, "Chief, I need more guys. I'll see who I got." And next thing you know, five guys show up to do three guys' job. So, we got these great people. They volunteer their time, and we're exceptionally grateful. So, thank you for already volunteering and getting part of our family. So, let's do this. Ready? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of state.
And the Charter for the City of Utica.
And the Charter of City of Utica.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
The policies and procedures.
Policies and regulations.
Of the City of Utica Fire Department.
Of the City of Utica. City of Utica Fire Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of firefighter.
Duties of firefighter.
And EMT.
EMT.
For the City of Utica Fire Department.
For the City of Utica Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Very good. Thank you.
I liked it when you used to come by.
As far as the meeting? And next, we have here a promotion, which is always a proud moment. So, we have firefighter Paul Nawacki. Join us up here. You want, Mr. Nawacki, you want to pin him? Because I will be happy to use the pointy part on him. Unless he's not been nice to him, then you can use the pointy part. It's okay if you miss. We'll do this one first.
Been a long day.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
And the policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Of the City of Utica Fire Department.
The City of Utica Fire Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter lieutenant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter lieutenant.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
So, Paul's one of our paramedics, one of our Utica firefighter inspectors. So, he goes out with another team of guys and they make sure that everything's in compliance so that when, you know, if you own a business or a home, make sure that's safe before you're able to go into business. So, we appreciate his hard job. He gets a lot of grief, because people sometimes don't want to do the right job with their business, or maybe their new kitchen, or, you know, they don't say a restaurant. So, he goes out there and makes sure that it's safe, so we all can benefit from that.
Is he bleeding yet?
Is there a medic? Congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you.
So, firefighters, new guys, if you guys could along real quick, just meet with your council and introduce yourselves.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Just right around the front. Mr. Corey, just come right around the front. There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congrats.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Great to have you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Welcome.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations, and thank you for deciding to spend your time here in Utica fighting fires. It's a noble profession. We appreciate that you're willing to risk your life to save the residents, and hopefully your excellent skills and your paramedic and EMT will pay off by helping save a lot of lives. I know these guys, they run real hard and hours a night, and we appreciate you taking Utica as your place to work. So, thank you so much. Okay, so, next, we have the portion of the meeting. And folks, if you have family members that are here and you're just here for fire, no offense, if you want to leave, we're not going to be, you know, some of you don't care about what's going to happen next.
Here. Glad to know we had a better turnout for our guys, but we have a big oil spill out on Hall Road and Van Tech right now. So, my guys are out there.
All right, good. Okay, so, Chief said that we got some guys out there on an oil spill, so when the duty calls, they run. All right, folks, thanks for coming out. So, is there anyone here today from the public that would like to address council on any one item that's on the, on the agenda? Before you use the agenda on the green page there, if there's anything that speaks to you and you'd like to address council on any one of those matters, you're certainly welcome to make your way to the podium at this time. Anyone resident or anyone? Okay, we'll show that no one had any public comments at this time. Next up, we had unfinished business. It was our sign ordinance amendments. Council was not completely satisfied with the way the sign ordinance had been presented. Council members and members from the planning commission met with the planners, and they were able to fire away on some new things and come up some great ideas, and apparently they've reached a consensus, which they feel is a lot better fit for the city at this time. Mr. Calendino on the count of time, sir?
Just want to thank the planning commission and the planners. They put a lot of hard work into it. Felt bad that I threw a few wrenches into the machine at kind of the last minute, but we had a work session earlier in the week. It was, I thought, very productive. We came to some really good compromises that I think are ultimately going to better serve the businesses and residents of Utica, so it's all good.
Good. Okay, then, if I'm not mistaken, it would require a motion to go ahead and adopt the ordinance as presented. Council members, you would have the ordinance in your packets, I believe? Any questions on that at this point? So, it would require a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
So, moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Sikora. It's been supported by Mr. Calendino. Any discussion on the matter? If not, then we'll have the roll call vote. Ms. Ricketts?
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes. Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, and thank you to the planners and Mr. Galaska and Mr. Calendino and all members that got involved on the planning commission to make that happen. Excellent work on that. Thank you so much. There was no consent business noted. Correspondence, we did receive a thank you letter from the Lions Club, from Ms. Perot, the treasurer, thanking us for getting involved with them and having them be part of the city.
Thank you.
And we did receive a thank you letter from Delaney Cooper. I don't remember the context of it, but it is another thank you letter. Then also, I received a special tribute from State Senator Peter Lassito for some work I did as, when I was off duty from being the mayor and my police work. So, that was nice to have him.
Have you read that, Mayor? Have you read that?
Ever read that aloud? No?
I think it should be read aloud. I do.
Okay.
Because it's a big deal. Would you like to read it? Would you like to have Mr. Sikora read it?
Yeah, sure.
Let council come in, Sikora.
Yeah, that's very nice. Thank you.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, thank you. That's very nice.
Okay, from the state of Michigan, a special tribute to Mayor Tom Deion. Let it be known that it's a very special privilege to acknowledge the exemplary efforts of Utica Mayor Tom Deion as a public safety officer. On July 7th, 2019, Officer Deion observed a young man parked in his car blocking the driveway to a park. After initially speaking to the subject and leaving the scene, Officer Deion returned 30 minutes later to check in on him. Upon returning to the scene, he observed the subject attempting to drive his vehicle into Lake St. Clair. Officer Deion acted quickly and calmly to defuse the situation and ultimately save the man's life. Faced with the dangerous situation, Officer Deion showed his ability to stay calm and act swiftly to preserve the lives of those he serves. Officer Deion is a compassionate community leader who is an outstanding example for other law enforcement and citizens. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor and commend Officer Tom Deion. May he know of our admiration and thanks for keeping our community safe. Signed, Peter J. Lassito, State Senator, the 8th District.
So, that's very nice. Thank you.
It was nice.
Thanks for reading that, too. That's nice. Okay, so, it would require a motion to receive and file the correspondence.
So, moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Sikora, supported by Ms. Terrencey. Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. New business from the mayor's office. We did discuss today in a work session prior to the council meeting, the admin resolution. City council is looking at dissolving the current admin resolution and assigning contracts to department heads and their subordinates. So, it is an ongoing operation right now, and we will continue further discussions as months carry on.
Do we need to make a motion, since we have the 180 days and all that?
So, would it be appropriate?
If you want to terminate the admin resolution, there needs to be a motion with a vote to do so.
I will make a motion to terminate the administrative resolution and move to contracts for department heads and assistant department heads.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Sikora, supported by Ms. Terrencey. Any discussion on it? Okay, Ms. Ricketts, we'll have the roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes. Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, council. Next up is a senior housing landlord fee. Ms. Ricketts, can you help us with that one?
Oh, sure. Due to the sale of senior housing, it was requested that, since we hadn't had recent landlord inspections, that is, the city requires on any rental property that we do a full landlord inspection at senior housing prior to the sale. I'm not sure we're paying the fee or if they're going to pay that.
They.
They opted to pay the fee.
Mr. Hicks, please. You can enlighten us.
Yeah, in talking with Ryan, the people that are purchasing. In talking with Ryan, the people that are purchasing the senior building, we had confirmed that there is a fee, that they will pay the fee, but we are going to do the inspection first, and then, once all the sale of the building and everything is done, they will pay the landlord fee and we'll carry on as usual.
All right, very good.
So, I guess the motion would be to allow them to pay the fee of $2,775 after closing?
They being the buyers.
Correct.
Okay.
So, moved to do, that's what I could just say.
It's been moved by Mr. Sikora. It's been supported by Mr. Cunningham. Any conversation, discussion on the matter? Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. The motion carries. Thank you. Next up, our tree lighting ceremony. It's, several of you have been there in the past. This last year was, has been growing in popularity and in participation. I'm asking respectfully of council to allow us to have the tree lighting ceremony take place at the Jack and Canoon in Riverwalk Park slash Memorial Park on December 6th of this year. Along with that, council, I'm requesting that we have the use of fireworks for a commercial-grade display. You might recall that previously, the DDA had put a deposit down for the fireworks for a festival that was to be in 2018. That festival was then canceled, so the money remains in deposit with the Ace Pyro. They're more than willing to let us spend their money with them, and the DDA would pick up the balance of the work as far as the price. And so, respectfully again, asking for the tree lighting ceremony with adjoining fireworks on December 6th.
So, moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Cunningham, supported by Ms. Terrencey. Any discussion on the matter?
Yeah, one question.
Discussion, sir?
Yeah, December 6th, what time?
That's a Friday. Time will probably be about 7:00, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's kind of, we're in a figuring stage. So, once we have a time, it'll be in the evening. So, after dinner sometime, somewhere maybe 6:00 or 7:00-ish. Yes, ma'am?
Then Ace Pyro will make sure they have all the liability insurance.
Yeah, they will.
And we'll see all that.
Yep, they will. They will submit a liability insurance policy, name us as a insured party as well. And we'll go through all the process with the fire department and everything else that has been checked off.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, it's been moved. It's been supported. It's been discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. The motion carries. Thank you. From the mayor's office again, tomorrow, I've been invited, which is September 11th, been invited to attend a 9/11 ceremony in Lansing by our state rep, Diana Farrington, so I will be attending that. Chief got to go last year. Chief Cody went last year, and Diana Farrington reached out to me and asked me if I'd like to participate, which I gladly accepted, so I will be in Lansing tomorrow as both mayor and police officer tomorrow. So, I'll be doing both. So, that's it from the mayor's office. Council, any reports to Mr. Sikora?
I'm just very happy to learn yesterday that the sign for the Joseph E. Francis Municipal Complex will be delivered tomorrow. So, we will be able to put it in place shortly thereafter.
Very good. Exciting. I know that's, we've been waiting for that to happen. It's finally going to give that peace and a little bit of closure. Ms. Terrencey?
Yeah, I would like to, this weekend was Apple Fest weekend at St. Lawrence Parish, and it was by far the hugest Apple Fest ever. And I want to thank police and fire for being there and doing such a good job. And I actually saw the fight, and I think it was Saturday or Sunday. I was there on both days. I can't remember. But the kids were able to look inside the fire truck, and, you know, it was very cool. But we do appreciate your presence. St. Lawrence really does appreciate your presence.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And the residents, too. So, thank you. I thank you both.
And I want to reiterate to you on that as well. The fire department, police department showed up big this weekend, which in the Apple Fest, I saw them out there, and then also helping out with our little friend Ethan with the leukemia. I mean, that's what you get in a small town, you know. I oftentimes, you know, I get this from the chiefs, and said, what's the, you know, yes is the answer. What's the question? You know, and that's, love being able to be able to, you know, reach out and tap you guys for resources and immediately send people and volunteers. So, thank you so much, and thank the guys for their good, hard work. We truly appreciate it. Any other council members would like to give a report? Mr. Sylvester?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I was thinking in terms of, as we have some different needs in the city. We're trying to come up, as always, you know, with funding. And I was looking at the Ralph Wilson Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan and potentially have some dollars. They have, there's four areas. One is the Design and Access Fund. And so, it's for pre-planning, development, construction costs for projects related to increasing walkability and bikeability of local communities, or increasing outdoor recreational activities within the region. So, you know, their site has some example-type things, like you look at 2017, City of Chelsea got 10 grand for the design of their park. Fraser's, Beaster Club. I bring it up just thinking in terms of, as we think of different projects for maximizing the trail and whatnot, and especially the dog park, just because I think that's going to be just a total sink of funds. We'll probably want to be looking at different ways of having money. I'm just saying.
Well, it has revenue-generating capabilities.
Oh, it does, yeah.
It does.
Oh, sure. And. I don't know what SEBCOD.
I don't know how much it costs to maintain grass, but we're.
SEBCOD also, you know, they have the transportation alternatives program. And again, I was trying to look, I was thinking more towards like 2022. That kind of stuff. Sorry, because we're not, I speak with my hands. Although, it looks like this was, and I don't know if, so, they're saying, hey, project applications for 2021 and 2022? I mean, is that normal, that they're that far out?
Yeah, so, especially if it's construction money.
Yeah.
TAP grants, you can apply four times a year. One time it's a SEBCOD money, and then the other three times it's money allocated from MDOT. And so, what they'll do is if you apply in October, you usually find out you've been awarded in maybe June, and then, then you have to go through the whole process of bidding out the construction, and so, you really won't receive the grant dollars until like the next construction season in typical government fashion.
Okay, I was just wondering, any applicability, but the fact that it does seem to connect with the bike aspect and shared youth paths.
Yeah.
So, just things for us to look forward to potentially and try to, and try to access. I also noticed the Michigan Department of Treasury is doing their fiscally-ready communities program. I don't know if that's something that Phil's already involved in, but it's, you know, basically, it's a free train that's going on, and they're helping you out. Basically, get ready for the recession type thing, it looks like. They've got October 16th, that's half-day training at Flint, November 6th, half-day training in Jackson. I don't know if it's even worth exploring. I mean, I'm happy to go up there and try to get stuff, but it would seem to be more of a Phil thing, but he's always busy as well, so I just bring that up. And I also, I've got the Best Practices Guide, and I'll just hand that off to Phil for what's that, whatever that's worth.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sylvester. Any other council members? Anything to report?
No, but I thank Perry. I thank Councilman Perry for doing that, yeah. That's good information to have.
Okay, so, next we have Marsha Daigee from the library.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just have a few announcements, a couple of announcements to make about the library. First of all, we had a really outstanding summer reading program. Catherine Francis, who we hired, who we were able to hire about a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, thanks to our residents approving the new millage that was passed, and for which we are eternally thankful, because we would not have been able to hire Catherine if we had not had that millage. But she coordinates all of it, she puts it all together, she gets in touch with all of the programs, the programs and everything, and it was outstanding. We had over 542 people attend programs, which, you know, all the programs combined, which was really wonderful. And we had five teens that finished just the teens part, which was good, because we haven't ever done a teens' summer reading, so we've never tried to do that. And if I'm bragging on Catherine, I also have to brag on the entire library staff, because it affects every single one of us. It's a really, really, really busy time, so, and the staff, our staff is really, is outstanding. I mean, they are, they just, they go above and beyond. And I will thank the mayor for not scheduling any food trucks in our lot this year. Because with summer reading, that would have been really difficult, but we appreciated that very, very much, very much, not to have those. I mean, they're great, and we appreciate having them downtown, but sometimes there was an overlap with the library, so we appreciate that. We have great events coming up in the fall. I won't list them all, they are available on our, or a list of them is available on the website and the Facebook page, and I will be giving a copy to Ms. Ricketts so she can post it on cable, but among the things, we've got drop-in crafts. These have proved very popular, so that we have the craft all put together. Parents and kids come in, pick it up, take it home and do it. The instructions are there. So, you know, if they're just coming by the library to pick up books, everybody's time is busy, and especially, you know, is full, and especially in the fall, it's a crazy time. But this way, they can just pick up a craft that's all ready, all they have to do is assemble it at home, the instructions, materials, everything is ready there for them. So we have drop-in crafts, we have a pumpkin painting event, which is coming up in October, that the mayor is assisting us on, he's looking for pumpkins. So that's the little pumpkins, of course, you know, not the big ones. We have a pumpkin painting event, we've got Paws for Dogs are coming back, and the second Saturday most months will be movies at the library, so we have great movies coming up. So I encourage you, you know, all of our residents to drop by, call us if you have any questions, or if you just want more information, or as I said, you can check our webpage or our Facebook page. For the last two years, the Utica Heritage Association and the Utica Library and Sterling Heights have entered into competitions with other libraries to try and get the, our historical newspaper, the Utica Sentinel, digitized. And we've lost both times, we came in really close last year, but we did not succeed. So, the Utica Heritage Association has decided just to do this on their own, with funds that they made from, from sales of the Utica History Book, you know, that they've been selling, and has been very successful. So they have got the very first, first part of it, they're going to do it in like, probably three sections. So we now have 1876 to 1910 that has been digitized. We are looking to see if the Suburban Library Cooperative can help us host it, so provide the web space so that anybody from home can access it if they wish. That's our ultimate goal in the long run, is to get it all on the web, so anybody who's doing research can look for it. But for now, we do have pen drive at the library that you can use at the library, that if you're looking for those years, and you can print, you know, what you need from the library, so anyone who is interested, we have that. We're really thankful to the Utica Heritage Association for taking this task on, because it's something that the library has certainly wanted to do. Our microfilm reader died in the flood of a few years ago, when it kind of wiped out just about everything in our basement. And we simply couldn't afford a new one, and then when they talked about digitizing, we thought, well, we'll just go, we'll just skip that, and if we can get it online for everybody, plus have a pen drive for people who don't have, you know, internet access at home, so they can do their research at the library, that would be great. So we are very thankful. The Utica Heritage Association has also paid for Overdrive for the last five, six years. And Overdrive is the online database that allows our residents to check out audiobooks and books on, ebooks. And when we could not afford that, they paid, they started paying for that, and they have continued to make that as a yearly gift to the library. So we work closely with them, they work closely with us, our needs and our desires are intertwined, and they have offered great support to us and to the residents, you know, that the Sentinel is a very valuable historical newspaper, with pictures from, you know, events like the big fire in 1900, and, you know, all kinds of really interesting things. Just to let you know, a couple of things that are coming up in the fall, the library is going to purchase a mobile hotspot. For those of you who do not know what that is, it's something that you can check out from the library that will give you internet access wherever it's available. So you can take it with you, it will allow up to 10 devices to use it, and it won't cost you anything, because the library is supplying that. It will be for Utica residents only, it is not something that we will share, you know, with the library cooperative, it is that we're starting with one, that's all we can afford right now, but we'll see how the demand is, and if there is a need for more than one. So essentially, if you're going, okay, you have an old car like mine, you know, that doesn't have any wireless connections or possibility of that anywhere, and you've got the whole family, and you really would love to have some kind of internet while you're writing, so that people can be on their iPads and everything else, this would provide that for you, you know, if you check this out. Or if you were going on vacation somewhere, and you were staying in a cabin or something that didn't have internet, this would provide that for you. Now, it has to have, you have to have cell, you know, you have to have the capability to pick up internet, so it's not going to pull it if there's not some kind of internet provider around. But it's really wonderful, other libraries that have used it have just found it, you know, to be very, very popular. And the other thing that we're adding, that should be here in like October, probably by January, we will be adding ancestry.com to our list of databases, and that is also a very, very popular database. Unfortunately, and this is ancestry.com's rule, not ours, it does not allow remote access. So you can't sit at your computer at home and access it, but you can come into the library and have access to all that is available with that. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
On the portable internet, what is the length of time that a resident could use it for?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
It's two weeks, it will be holdable, so people can place holds on it, checks out for two weeks with no renewal.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
What's the ballpark cost of the Overdrive app?
$2,000 a year and growing.
Okay.
What they've started to do is, it started off as, for us, now every library, it depends on your size, big libraries obviously pay more, but for us, it's $2,000 a year. But in order to increase that collection, they are going to start kind of assessing us, I call it the condo fee, you know, where you get in and then all the extras are, you know, cost you more. So they're going to start assessing an additional fee. It should not be exorbitant for us, because we're small, you know, but it'll be over $2,000 this year, so.
Through Overdrive, I've probably read more than $2,000 worth of books, so that's why I am.
I know, it's, you know what, the use on it, at first it was very, very slow, but the use on it has really, has really started to peak just starting this summer. And there's something else, for those of you who listen to audiobooks, which is available on audio, on Overdrive, but also RB, I can't remember the, digital, which is one of our databases that has the magazines. Starting, I hope, in December, RB stands for Recorded Books, and Recorded Books was one of the first to put books on audio, and they are going to make available through that database a lot of other audiobooks. And the audio selection in Overdrive is not as large as we'd like it to be, so this gives another for people who like to listen to their books as well as read, or instead of reading, so, yeah. Any other questions?
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Daighy.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, so from the planning commission, anything from the planners?
No, nothing new, just happy that the sign ordinance was passed this evening. And I will just sort of echo what Councilman Sylvester talked about with the TAP grant and the Community Foundation Grant, there is a lot of money out there for trails. You guys do have great trails already going through your community. I've heard rumors that there may be monies available on a yearly basis for trail maintenance as well, which is something you guys would probably need in the future.
Excellent.
So we'll definitely keep our eye out on that. Our department coordinates regional trails throughout Macomb County, so any projects related to that, or any parks and recreation stuff, feel free to send them my way, we're always happy and willing to help write grants to, for the community, so.
The maintenance possibility, I understand it's just a rumor, possibility, it's exciting, I was looking forward to the term to grab, so.
But that's all for me.
Does anyone have anything further for the planners?
Oh, man.
Ms. Benado, if you want to, you want to slide out of here?
Sounds great.
All right. We know you work for the county, you don't work for us particularly on paper, so, but we appreciate it, if you want to go ahead and go on home to your family, that'd be great.
Thanks, guys, have a great evening.
Mr. Grusson from the assessors office has nothing to report tonight. And Mr. Hicks, anything from the building department?
Just want to reiterate what she had said about, thank you for passing the sign ordinance. It'll make my job a lot easier, hopefully.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chief Mosack from the fire department?
Yeah, mayor and council, we're getting a lot of Medicaid, Medicare, it's changed a lot of laws and, for paying a lot of stuff, and we're going on citizen assists for the elderly.
These are like lift assists?
They're lift assists, they fall back in their chair, fell down, we pick them up. So according to our ordinance right now, that's a treat and no transport, which is a $400 bill, which Medicare won't cover, because they're not getting transported to the hospital. So I'm looking for adding a citizen assist fee request, which would be $200, which would cover our three guys going out there, lifting them off the ground, our administrative fees, and cover our costs for the trucks. And it'd probably make it a little bit more palpable, you know, people are on fentanyl and things like that, and the $400 is a little steep, so, even the $200 is steep, but it's a cost of doing business, you know, unfortunately. So I would like to add that, if we could.
Council discussion, or Mr. Caladino, any thoughts? Mr. Cunningham?
I think it's a great, any relief we can provide is good. And the cost covered for?
That'll cover, that'll cover our expenses.
So are you going to mastercard them, or ask for the money on the spot?
No, we don't do that, it goes through our commed billing, all our billing's done through a third party, because they know all the Medicare, Medicare laws, so, you know, the billing codes.
What percentage would you anticipate to get of that? Like if we send out?
It's hard to say.
Or do we get, when ACCOMED bills?
Usually, yeah, I'd have to ask Phil the percentage, he sees all that paperwork. He sees all this.
I think it's a good idea, thank you.
Okay, so the chief does have a request to change our policy, to make it, so we have a citizen assist fee request of $200 per non-transport for, keep what we call non?
It'd be a citizen assist, whatever we deem it, it'll be coded differently than a treat and non-transport.
Okay, so I'd like to say have a motion to approve the chief's request as presented.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Sikora, it's been supported by Mr. Caladino. Any further discussion? Very good, Ms. Ricketts, check that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries. Thank you, chief, anything further?
Yeah, we're going to have an open house October 6th, 11 to 2, it's a Sunday. And then ongoing with all the volunteering, the American Legion came down and gave the guys a little award here, a certificate of appreciation. We help them out every year on their, their annual picnics. So we go down there for the kids and squirt water and fill their dunk tanks and do all that good stuff for them, so they stopped by and gave this to the guys, so. Just like to thank all the guys that do the volunteering throughout for everything, so.
Other than that?
I'm good.
All right, did you want to read that or anything?
Did you want to read it?
Did you give a quick read?
That's nice, that's nice.
Certificate of appreciation, the certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to the Utica Fire Department, in recognition for the sincere appreciation of outstanding service and assistance, assistance which has contributed to the advancement of the American Legion programs and activities dedicated to God and country. And it's the Victor American Legion Hall 351, Michigan.
That's nice.
Yeah, very nice.
All right, thanks, chief, appreciate the report. Chief Cody from the police department?
Just wanted to recap on Councilwoman Terenzin's comments regarding the St. Lawrence Fest, it was one of the largest on record, according to what they're telling us. I want to thank the residents for being quite patient with some of our traffic issues that we had, there were some parking matters that took place in some of the residential areas, and we were able to get those resolved, but no major complaints. And I spoke to a few people at the foot of their driveway and so forth, and they were, they were comfortable with it, and obviously they're familiar with the event, so it went off very well. Also, just want to remind people this weekend, we do have the Glow Run. Chris Hines came in, he asked for the benefit run that he's doing from Jimmy John's out to the field, that's taking place this weekend on Saturday. It's an evening Glow Run, where they do the running on the bike path at night with the glow sticks and so forth. If anybody's interested to come down and either spectate or be a part of it, they do have some festivities afterwards, but I just want to remind people, they did ask for some road closures at about 7:00 on Saturday, just to get the start of the race going, and then we'll monitor them as they return, just to make sure that they safely get back to the ballpark. So, other than that, we're all set.
Very good. So, next up, Mr. Lang from the DPW.
Give my mind in order again. Yes, mayor and council, you should have in your packet a copy of the municipal separate stormwater ordinance that I'm going to ask for the council to adopt. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, if there's any questions?
We don't have it, I don't have it.
It was sitting over there.
It's on the table, yeah.
I did submit it in time for the packets. But maybe because it was so lengthy. Pardon me?
Okay, so council, it would be the case that you haven't had time to review this. So, Mr. Lang, we would probably request that we get a chance to put this on the next agenda item, unless you have something that you can offer today.
No, you don't, we don't have to push it through tonight, if you care to. Yeah, you can certainly read it.
If you can give us the?
So, what it is, it's a municipal separate storm sewer system ordinance that are basically compelled to adopt, to comply with our MS4 permit for Eagle. Eagle, formerly DEQ, is now Michigan Environmental, Michigan Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. I'll try to remember that. That's basically a, I don't want to say a boilerplate, I forget the term, but that's being adopted across the county and most of Southeast Michigan in compliance with our separate stormwater permit. And what it's for is for us to regulate how stormwater is put into our system, and what we can do to enforce improper stormwater and/or leach aids or inappropriate connection illicit discharges, things of that nature, so.
Is it changing anything about how we do things now, or?
It is in the sense that it gives us a little more teeth, because we've adopted an ordinance.
Okay.
That allows us enforcement, and there's a, there's a lot of different, I'd say enforcement, there's a lot of different ways to go about it. It also sets standards for post-construction, reconstruction, best management practices for ourselves as a city, which we're currently following anyway, we have to, it's in our, it's in our permit application.
Yeah, no, just, I saw in the NNL's magazine thing, they were talking about Open Storm, so a, apparently an open source, a package of open source sensors, hardware, and algorithms. And I love algorithms, to measure and control stormwater, if it's something you're familiar with or whatever, or did even have any value, but this Open Storm, a smart city solution to water management. Is it, have you ever heard of this group, or this service, or whatever?
I have not.
I'll give you, I'll give you the article on it, I read it, but I didn't understand it, you probably will.
Yeah, I have not. You know, we work with the Clinton River Water Shake Council, they do our, our public education plan, our public participation plan, we do our own illicit discharge investigation, we do our own outfall investigations, we file our own annual reports, which is what we're currently doing now, and we just submitted a new permit, and part of the new permit is the, Eagle won't tell us we have to adopt this, they strongly suggest it, and it keeps us in good stead with them as far as how we're managing our stormwater and what we have in place to enforce the improper discharges of stormwater.
Ms. Ricketts?
I did, I did, I did have the city attorney review it, I don't know, Linda, if you want to comment on it?
No, just I've reviewed it, I think under the circumstances, and like you said, it's being adopted in many, many other municipalities, it's, I mean, with my approval from a legal standpoint.
However, it's not the end of the world if we don't do it tonight, we can put it on next.
Ms. Ricketts, is it required to have a public hearing, meaning that we're going to adopt an ordinance?
It's not a change from zone or zone number, it just, it just wouldn't be affected till kind of, ten day that.
So at this point, I don't really, we need a motion at this point to do anything with it, other than just, we'll take this under advisement, and then we will visit with this the next council meeting after it's been reviewed. And then, the next up, Mr. Lang, the Green Space Grant Request?
Yes, actually, the official, the official grant that I'm going to request to apply for is a Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant. It's, it's co-sponsored by the Green, Green Macomb folks of Macomb County. Similarly, we got a tree grant for the for the parking lot across the street, the DDA parking lot, Jimmy John's Field parking lot. We planted some 35 or 40 trees last year, I believe around the perimeter. Likewise, I'd like to apply for a grant to get upwards of possibly 50 trees. I only saw this grant two days ago, and, so we'd give about as many trees as I can get, and I'd like to put them in Pioneer Park is what I'd like to do. So we do have some landscape available for Pioneer Park, but not to the degree because of the budgets that I'd like to see. So any trees that we could get, some will be natives and others will be, I say natives, they're a little, like a, what are they, cedars and possibly some eastern red buds that are, we kinda have that theme going already down the bike path, and I'd like to line part of that park with that, and then get a fair amount of shade trees to actually put in the park itself, and maybe we can start to reinforce the canopy if we would. Keep it in mind that a portion of the park, you know, the trees, as the park grows, some of the trees might have to be moved, but we'll do our best to...
Is it a matching grant?
The, the match is an in-kind match. We use city staff to match, so we would do the planning and the watering and whatnot. So they, they, we use the city staff hours as in-kind match. Even writing the grant qualifies, I believe.
Yeah, and similarly, last year when we did the trees, I think we ended up spending 750 bucks or something like that, and we got, I think it was 45 trees built, or maybe, I'm sorry, 50, you know, I wanna say maybe 54. We got a lot of trees.
It was a lot.
Yeah, so we spent a couple hundred dollars, and we got a ton of trees for just a few hundred dollars in the end.
And the trees are about, they'll, they'll allot up to $150 per tree, and this time of year, and in working with Wiggins, the more trees we buy, the better discount we get. So $150 should buy a reasonably decent starter tree.
I love the idea.
Two to two and a half, maybe three inch caliber trees, so.
One thing, though, I know the trees we planted in the lot, the DDA lot, a lot of them are dying on the north perimeter.
I know some of them are. I think we've lost three so far.
Yeah, that sounds about right. So I don't know if we're not watering them right, and if we have more trees, how are we gonna get those watered?
Well, we, we water them, and you just, we do the best we can. I mean, you know, so, like, right now, right now is the best time to plant. So they'll get water throughout, you know, all the way till January. From the day we put them in the ground, we probably won't water them but two or three times. I wouldn't expect we'll get them in the ground much before, at this rate, mid-October. So with the rains and snow and that, we probably won't water them but two or three times. And then probably not at all in the spring because it's so wet.
And some trees just don't take. I mean, the certain percentage are just knocking up.
Yeah, 10 to 15% is what we expect. Sometimes 20, depending on the, depending on the weather.
Weather conditions, yeah.
Actually, overall, for, for what we put in and what we lost, we did real well.
Okay, good.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Lang. So Council would require a motion to approve Mr. Lang's request to apply for the green space grant.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. O'Donnell, it's been supported by Mrs. Terenzzi. Any further discussion on the matter?
No, I don't think so.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Bill, Mr. Lang and the guys from the, our contractors are working really hard down at Pioneer Park right now, so progress is steadily moving forward. If you'd like to see it for yourself, you're certainly welcome to take a walk down there and see what they're doing. Just kinda be mindful that they are working as a construction zone. So enjoy it from afar while they're down there using that heavy machinery.
Right. Did you have something else?
Just a couple of quick updates. Van Dyke curb project should, should, it depend on the weather. However, there's rain the rest of the week, but they were expected to finish up at least the concrete pouring tomorrow. That'll probably get pushed back a couple days, but we expect the Van Dyke curb project, at least the concrete portion of it, to be done within a couple of days. We're putting back the brick pavers and then restoring the shoulder ourselves. Hawn Street should open, westbound Hawn off of Van Dyke, that will open either Thursday evening, Friday, someday. We need about seven days for cure, five to seven days, so. So we'll see that open. And then the mayor mentioned Pioneer Park, which's well underway, and the water and sewers in, the foundation for the restroom facilities are in, the helical fears for the restroom facilities in, large amount of earth moving going on. And they're expected to pave what's supposed to be this week, but it was put off to next week, so.
Good. Well, they're doing a great job over there. Appreciate you standing on top of it. It's looking, it's looking good progress. Appreciate it.
It's coming together. We're probably gonna get some extra work done that we weren't expecting to be able to do.
You tell them, thank you very much. All right, thank you, Mr. Lang. Appreciate it. Mr. Patanaster with the Van Dyke curb replacement payment, item A.
Mayor and Council, you have in your packet a memo over my signature advising you that Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark has submitted progress estimate number one for the Van Dyke curb replacement project in the amount of 103,000, I'm sorry, that's the contract amount. The progress estimate is in the amount of 85,134.90 less retainage of 5,169.85, leaving us with an amount payable of 79,965.05. I'm awaiting review by the street administrator, and pending that, I will release payment to the contractor. Likewise, received this morning from Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, progress estimate number one for Pioneer Park, which you should have found on your table this evening. That is for an amount of 167,803.20. I'm awaiting review by the street administrator for that as well.
And again, all these funds are by way of, are paid for by way of the grants, correct?
That is correct. Now, on the Van Dyke project, that is a grant of 150,000. And the contract was 103,397 plus some engineering costs. The Pioneer Park was a grant legislative earmark coming through the MEDC. They awarded 500,000. The contract was bid at 550,151.50.
And the DDA kicked in 125,000 on top of that?
That is correct.
Yes, sir. So Council would require a motion for the Van Dyke curb replacement, which is item A from Mr. Patanaster's report.
I thought we determined that we weren't doing motions on these things. Isn't that right, Phil? Didn't we have this discussion?
That was the decision at last month's meeting.
I understand correctly. So, okay, then really you're just offering a report today, not looking for the motion?
No, it was just in, for your information.
Any questions, Mr. Patanaster? Progress on these projects as far as the financials? Everything appears being in order with what we're expecting, Mr. Patanaster?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, Council, consider yourself so informed. All right, anything else, sir?
Informed is good.
Would like to remind the taxpaying public that the deadline for paying without interest has passed. We will continue to accept summer tax payments through the end of February, but there will be interest accrued at 1% per month on the first day of each month on the outstanding balance. As of the end of August, we had collected 93% of our tax levy, which is right on target, so.
Well, good, very good. All right, Mr. Patanaster, thanks for the reports. Appreciate your time and your efforts. So, Mr. Ricketts, anything from the Clerk's office?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. From the Downtown Development Authority folks, I will just add one little item here on the agenda, to report that the Council and DDA had approved the concept of having a mural painted on the side of the Steampunk Tap Room building. The owner of the business has asked us to maybe stop that progress because he is actually looking at placing an awning on the side of the building to cover his patio, and he felt that it'd do an injustice to the awning, I'm sorry, the mural, that would be obscured by the awning, and he thought that would be money not properly used by the DDA. So he's respectfully withdrawn his request to have a mural painted on the side of the building at this time. Again, makes sense that the mural would be obscured by the awning, so he'd, you know, in good heart, told us that he would like to pass on that opportunity. At the same time, Ms. Spiegel, just today here is Jessica Spiegel, Utica resident. She is a talented artist, and, and working with Mr. Frank Fisher, who owns the building that houses Deanna's barber shop. The western wall of that building is fit for a mural, and Ms. Spiegel has offered up some renderings tonight that she'd like to show to Council. She's coming before the DDA meeting because the way the scheduling worked out, so she's gonna give us some ideas of what she would like to paint on the side of that building, and then obviously she'll come before DDA and do the same thing. So, Ms. Spiegel, if you could maybe show us a couple of your renderings, that'd be great.
Yeah, you can just...
Yeah, you can just come right by. Yep. Yeah, let us pass them on through.
I have one painted. I have digital sketches, if you wanna look at them. This is an idea that I really like for that wall, based on the texture and, you know, with the bricks and the mortar being the way that they are.
Yeah, and if you know that building, the bricks and mortar, they're more like a 3D concept, they kinda pop out a little bit, have some real contour to them.
Like a geometric kind of...
And for those of you at home, you can see that, not so much with camera showing. But, and so, I see the red hair.
It's not. I mean, it just made sense.
I love it.
Yeah, I like it too. It adds a lot, I mean, it's not...
I love music.
So Jessica had some ideas, and she wanted, we talked about some things, I said, just send us something that's gonna be something that you created in your head. I think, we don't wanna give her any direction, to say, do this, do that, you know, we don't want people to be influenced by, give us something that fits just Utica, you know, because we're gonna have visitors from all over the place see this, and, you know, we want, we don't wanna pigeonhole you or put you in a, you know, in a spot saying, do this. So I think that's very creative.
Yeah, I think, no.
So, if Council wasn't opposed, the DDA might like to enter into a contract. Again, we've not consulted the DDA, other than the concept is in line, but we are in agreement right now with Mr. Fisher on that wall. We will ultimately enter into a contract with Council's permission to have another mural on the side of that building. So, Council, any questions or any considerations or comments for Mrs. Spiegel tonight?
Are we plan, trying to do that this year?
We're gonna try to do it this year, as I...
Because it's gonna get cold soon.
Yeah, she's, she's thinking it's a, how many week process for you?
Uh, between, I'm thinking around like two weeks solid, working...
24 hours.
And it's a much smaller project than the previous. But we have discussed, DDA has discussed continuing the process. We've only recently become informed that Mr. Wester Weiss from the Steampunk has opted out of the program at this time, and so I think it would be a natural fit to continue out with the progress. If Council's not opposed, I would like to have a motion to allow my office to enter into an agreement with Mr. Fisher to continue the process of having the murals by leasing that space so that Ms. Spiegel could do so if it was deemed fit by the DDA.
I'll make a motion.
Support. Okay, move by Ms. Terenzzi, supported by Mr. Secora. Any discussion on the matter? Very good. Mr. Ricketts will, will take the roll call vote.
Secora?
Yes.
Terenzzi?
Yes.
Covington?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Caladri?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes, very good. Thank you, Ms. Jessica. So Council likes that concept pretty well. Our next process will be going to the DDA, and then you'll, if they like everything, they'll enter into an agreement with you, a contract, and then the DDA will then also enter, oh, the city wants to enter a contract with them, and we'll get started. So good. Well, thanks for coming tonight. And who was this young man you brought with you?
My son Sawyer.
And Sawyer, a flick and jerk falcon? What grade are you in, buddy?
Sixth.
Sixth grade, all right.
Nice.
Good, well, pleasure meeting you. Thanks for bringing your mom with us tonight. You guys, if you guys wanna take off, unless you wanna see the more action at City Council, you're certainly welcome to stay.
He's learning about he has a government.
Okay. Did, did you have Mrs. Thompson by chance?
He has her last name.
Oh, yeah, that's my, that's my stepsister, that one over there. She's a good teacher, so she tells me. She's actually, she's a great teacher. So, okay, thank you. So that's the Downtown Development Authority business. Parks and Rec Commission, they have nothing to report at this time. However, they're seeking grants for some equipment that is exercise-related, so they are working on that concept right now. The Historical District, nothing to report. Lyndon McGrath from the City Attorney's Office.
No news is good news.
Very good. Senior Housing Steering Committee, nothing to report, chief. Mr. Lang, Senior Housing Steering, nothing at this time. The bill's payable, Council, if you did have the bills presented to you, you would've had a chance to review them. If there are no concerns or questions about them, we would require a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Secora, it's been supported by Ms. Terenzzi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion carries. At this time, is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on any topic whatsoever, that they'd like to have Council hear their voice? Okay, let it be known that at 8:36 in the PM, there was no one. At this time, we would require a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Support.
It's been, it's been moved by Mr. Support, it's been supported by Ms. Terenzzi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Wow.
8:30, six minutes late.
Way far behind. Good job.